Morning Bob.
Good morning. It's nine AM and it's I called order the January 12th, 2021 meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. I would like to remind everyone to please keep your microphones muted unless you are speaking or recognized by the chair to speak. At this time, I would like to ask the county clerk to call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I would like to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. I would like to ask that our IT department now give us a brief rundown on how to how participants may participate in the meeting if they wish to speak. And if you could do that for us, Brad, please.
Good morning. Assuming that participants in the meeting are using the Zoom client. If you in the meeting, if you select the participants tab down on the lower part of your screen, you will see a function come up in the lower right-hand corner of your screen called raise hand. That will notify the host that you would would like to speak in the meeting and I will ask you to to unmute your microphone.
All right. Thank you. We will now enter the citizens input input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and on items that are not on today's agenda. Are there any citizens who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands raised at this time indicating that they would like to speak.
All right. Thank you. We will then move on to the consent agenda portion of our meeting. And this can the consent agenda consists of approval of prior minutes as presented for 1229 of 2020 and January 5 of 2021, approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable and payroll and approval of public forum agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to amend or remove anything from today's agenda? Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand approved as as printed. We'll move to action items. Item number one, National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month Proclamation, presented by Sheila Benson from D VAC. Good morning, Sheila.
Good morning. Thank you for having us. We really appreciate this time with the board and with our community. So National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month Proclamation, this is what we are presenting today for January 2021, whereas millions of men, women and children are victims of human trafficking, which is the second largest and fastest growing criminal industry in the world. Whereas, human trafficking denies victims basic human dignity and freedom and is based on recruiting, harboring and transporting people through the use of force, fraud and/or coercion for the purpose of sexual exploitation or forced labor. It is a crime that can take many forms and tears at our social fabric, debases our common humanity and violates what we stand for as a country. Whereas traffickers frequently target victims and then use violence, threats, lies, false promises, debt bondage, or other forms of control and manipulation to force victims to work against their will or to keep victims involved in commercial sexual exploitation. Whereas, the US Justice Department has identified Kansas as an originating state for human trafficking and most trafficking in Kansas involves local children. Whereas, with improved victim identification, medical and social services, training for first responders and increased public awareness, the victims who have suffered this cruel crime can overcome the bonds of modern slavery, receive protection and justice and successfully reclaim their rightful independence. And whereas, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice officials and concerned citizens throughout Central Kansas and the United States to observe National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. Together, we commit to a society where our sense of justice tells us that united, we can eradicate this wrong and continue to fight for human dignity and the rights of every person. Now therefore, the Celine County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims January 2021 as National Slavery and Human Tre- excuse me, and Human Trafficking Prevention Month and applauds the efforts of the many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors and the plot in national and community organizations and private sector supporters for the efforts in opposing human trafficking in all its forms.
Thank you, Sheila. During these difficult times, are there are there any activities that you have scheduled or are you able to do that?
It's it's difficult, as you know, within person, but we do plan on doing some live Facebook activities. We're working on that at the moment. So look out on our Facebook page and we're going to try to get that out on different platforms, Salina Journal, to let people know when those are coming up. We also will be presenting information on our Facebook page and our different social media platforms such as oh, sorry, I know we have TikTok now, so we're getting up there. And then also Instagram and Twitter. So we'll get some information out there for our community. And we're always looking for volunteers to help with different things we have going on at the office and our shelter.
All right. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are there any commissioners who wish to speak or have questions? If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we proclaim January 2021 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we proclaim January 2021 as National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. I will call the roll for voting. Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wees.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is five, is aye also making the vote five to zero. Sheila, we will get you to sign the proclamation as quickly as possible.
Thank you so much. You appreciate it.
We'll move to item number two, which is the National Stalking Awareness Month Proclamation, presented by Abby Hunter of D VAC. Good morning, Abby.
Good morning, everyone. Okay. National Stalking Awareness Month Proclamation, January 2021. Whereas stalking is intentional harassment, a pattern of behavior directed at a specific person, causing that person to feel fear and endangerment for themselves or their family. The variation of stalking behavior ranges from hang up phone calls to more direct threats toward a victim. The likelihood of injury increases when the stalking behavior escalates over time. Whereas, under the laws of Celine County, Kansas and all jurisdictions in the US, stalking is a crime. Whereas, the majority of victims are stalked by someone they know, typically an ex-dating partner or acquaintance. And three in four women killed by an intimate partner had been stalked by that same intimate partner. Whereas, the Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports that 190 protection from stalking orders were filed in Celine County in 2018. Whereas, the statistics do not represent the true incidence and prevalence of stalking for multiple reasons, including not all victims report the crime to law enforcement and stalking is a tactic of domestic violence and sexual abuse. So it may not be reported as the primary form of abuse and victimization, although the victim has experienced stalking along with other forms of abuse. Whereas, many stalking victims are forced to themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs and obtaining protection orders. Whereas, many stalking victims lose time from work and experience serious psychological distress and lost productivity at a much higher rate than the general population. Whereas, communities can better combat stalking by raising awareness, adopting multidisciplinary responses by teams of local agencies and organizations and by providing more and better victim services. And now therefore, the Celine County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim January 2021 as National Stalking Awareness Month.
All right. Thank you, Abby. I'll ask you the same questions I asked Sheila. Do you have other activities planned during this difficult time or?
Same thing that Sheila said. We we hope to be on our Facebook page, the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas. It's all spelled out. You can find us on Facebook. We'll go live over the lunch hour and just talk about, you know, statistics and and you know, what goes into stalking and how you can help prevent stalking or intervene in stalking cases, things like this. And then our other social media platforms, we like to put little little bits up there. But as of now, that's that's what all about all we have planned. No official events other than that.
All right. Thank you. Assuming this gets approved here in just a second. We will also get you a signed proclamation to your for you to have. Are there any comments or questions of Ms. Hunter with from the commissioners? Not I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we proclaim January 2021 as National Stalking Awareness Month.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we proclaim January 2021 as National Stalking Awareness Month. I will call the roll for the vote. Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wees.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson is aye. That does pass five zero. Thank you again, ladies. We'll move to item number three. RFA 107-21 bid award for aggregate and aggregate hauling with Justin Mater, county engineer. Good morning, Justin.
Good morning, commissioners. Let me adjust my camera a little bit. Okay. Well, so as you said, I'm here to discuss and take action on our request for to award bids for the 2021 aggregate material and aggregate hauling. Sealed bids were opened on December 29th, 2020 at 11:00 AM. Six aggregate producers and six aggregate haulers submitted bids. However, the the aggregate material and the hauling are bid separately. However, we must evaluate the combined aggregate material and hauling in order to get to get a real a total cost for Celine County. So you should have in front of you or within your packet the the bid tabs, which should provide all of the bids for all of the materials and the hauling costs as well. Alternatives for action is to accept unit prices for the aggregate and aggregate haul as staff recommends. The second alternative would be to accept the unit prices for different aggregate producers and haulers. And then the third would be to reject all the bids. So the staff recommends in the request for action, there's a table of all my recommendations and I'll quickly try to go through that. For the SS3 material, we recommend buying material from two different quarries. The first one being Ham Incorporated with their quarry near Woodbine, Kansas for $12.95 a ton. With the hauler being Night Trucking for $8 a ton for a total cost of $20.95. The other SS3 material that we would we are recommending to purchase is from Nightland with the quarry near Melvern, Kansas for $7.55 with the hauling coming from Night Trucking for $15 a ton for a combined cost of $22.55. The SS5 material, and that's the material that the has been our main road rock for the last couple of years. We recommend purchasing the SS5 material from Ham Incorporated with their from their quarry near Woodbine, Kansas for $10.45 a ton. And Gary Johnson Trucking would be the haulers for 17 or $7.18 a ton for a combined cost of $17.63. The SS7 is a sand material and we're recommending to purchase that from American Sand right here in Salina, Kansas for $9.54. Another sand that we bid each year is the SS8. It has a little bit different gradation. That would be from Johnson Sand here in Salina for $7.13 a ton. Now, the Celine County, we we haul that material ourselves and so that's why there's no haul material or haul haulers for that material. And then the finally, the the last material is the AB3 and that's our base rock. We recommend purchasing that from Harshman Construction from their Florence Quarry for $10 a ton with Keller Trucking being the hauler for $9.25 a ton for a combined $19.25. Now, all right, all my recommendations in the table represent the the low bid for the combined material and hauling with the exception of the SS3 material. So this SS3 material is a crushed limestone with a maximum aggregate size of around three quarters of an inch. Just to give you some perspective, the SS5 material is a crushed limestone that we've been using for the last couple of years and it has a max aggregate size of an inch. There's some that's a little bit bigger, but in general, it's it's around a one inch size. So the the road bridge department has received requests from the public over the last couple of years to use a smaller and less dusty road rock. And so therefore, that's why we bid the SS3 material because that is a an overall a smaller material. However, in order to get a less dusty or harder road rock, we have to purchase material from a quarry that has that harder material. So if you look at the SS3 material, the actual the combined low bid for the SS3 is coming from Harshman Construction Quarry near Florence, Kansas. And it has a hardness of 38% and a cost of $20.50. Now, the hardness is really what we're looking at right now. And so the hardness is coming from a a quality test that that measures the degradation of the rock. Okay. So the percent shown, so this 38% for this Florence material, 38% of that rock crushed to powder. Okay. And so that material was lost. And so the higher percentage that that material has means that it's a softer rock. And it 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 degradates faster and therefore it's not going to last very as long on the road. Okay. So so now if you look at the the second and third low bid, which are the the quarries that actually recommended purchasing, the second low bid was Ham Incorporated with their from the quarry near Woodbine, Kansas. And that has a hardness of 20%. And the third is from Nightland near Melvern with a hardness of 23%. You know, so so we've got a and that's why I'm recommending to purchase the material from Woodbine and Melvern because it has the harder the harder material. So another thing to consider when purchasing aggregate is the actual the gradation, the gradation of the material and that's really the range of sizes of the material that we get actually stockpiled in our yard, you know, so it starts from the the biggest aggregate and then it varies all the way down to a a fine powder. And so the both of the material from Ham and Woodbine, they both meet that that's minimum specification for gradation. However, one rock might have more fines than the other. So it shows up with more fines. We don't have the specific gradation of that material. We're actually, I've got staff driving to those quarries right now to obtain samples so we can really see what the two different materials are. So the hardness is the same, but one material might have quite a bit more fines just to begin with, you know, it's not breaking down on the road. It just has more more fines showing up in our yard. And so that's why we're un-recommending to purchase the two materials for the SS3. They're they they have the harness that we're looking for. But then it it just gives us the option, once we actually look at the material to to purchase the either one of them. So for the budget impacts, the 2021 budgets for the for our sand, which is our SS8 and our SS7 is 185,000. For road gravel, you know, we're looking for the SS5 and the SS3 combined. We've got a combined budget of 385,000. The AB3, which is our base rock, we've got a budget 165,000 and then all the contract hauling has a combined budget of $370,000. So so what we're asking for today, so with this request for action is is we're asking the commissioners to accept the unit prices, you know, that we're recommending. However, you know, the quantities that the maintenance actual purchases, you know, a lot depends on the weather and really what our our needs are throughout the year. You don't really know what your needs are going to be until you get into it. But but with but this what this will do is you accept the unit prices and it'll allow the maintenance side to purchase whatever material they need within the budgets that I've I've just said.
All right. Are there any questions from commissioners?
Yes, I this is Roger Sparks. And Mr. Mater, one of my questions is that the difference between the on the SS3 material is that I know the price difference is about $1.60 a ton on those two. And if you got half of it from one and half from the other, that's a $32,000 difference. And my my main concern is there that that we're willing to spend that $32,000 difference there. I know that you're going to look at both. But on the flip side there, on your AB3, the harder rock, you're willing to spend less money there to buy the the softest rock, the 38% that you're telling us right now that is the worst of all these three and for a 23 cent difference a ton. So why not spend to get the ham or or the the better rock for $2,760 more?
Well, so for the
That's that's my concern.
Sure. Okay. So for for the AB3, we're we're okay purchasing the the softer rock. And that's that would be the material coming out of Harshman because it's it's not the intent of that material, which has a lot of fines in it, you know, that's not meant to go on the surface of the road. Okay. That is to pack down for a base. And so that's why you you need those fines in there too, to help kind of pack everything together. And then you place your SS5 or SS material, which is your surface material on top of it. And that's what the the traffic is going to be wearing on. And so that's why we're okay going with purchasing that that smaller or I'm sorry, that softer rock for the AB3. Now, as far as the the SS3, I don't necessarily I didn't necessarily mean that that or say that we're going to buy half from one and half from the other. Okay. To me
Oh, I know. I know that. Yeah.
Yeah, we we've got to look at the gradation and just for for the example that the Melvern rock is 7.6% more expensive than the material coming out of Woodbine. Okay. So 7.6% more expensive. But after we get samples of those materials and run gradation and we find that the Woodbine material is has 10% more fines, just to start off with. You know, then to me, the Melvern, even though it's 7.6% more expensive, it has the better value. I believe also Darren does not anticipate that the the SS3, which is more expensive than the SS7, he's planning on using that material in those areas where you have more residential homes, you know, because it's it's the the dust issues is what we're we're trying to cut down on as as well. As well as with the the more residential homes, you have more light type vehicles and usually lighter tires. You know, that that people purchase for their vehicles. And so I think that's his intent. The bulk of the purchases, I believe from Darren is still going to be the SS5. Darren, are you are you on the line where you can comment on that?
I am, Justin. And you're correct in in saying that the SS3 with the less dust is is what we generally or what we have been trying to use in the smaller subdivisions. or what we have been trying to use in the smaller subdivisions and the unincorporated towns.
Did we answer your question, Roger?
Yes, but it's, I mean, I'm okay. Hey, I would just, I would just, in my thought process, I would just assume spend the twenty-seven hundred and sixty dollars and take it out of a SS three to buy the better rock over here, you know, on the AB three. I just can't imagine, you know, because you're talking already that the fines are in it also. But I just, it's another one of those things where it's neither here nor there. But I just wanted to ask why. But I just soon spend the twenty-three cents difference instead of, and what really gets me also is that we're sitting here, and here it is at the first of the year, and we're looking at this aggregate, and we've probably hauled from all of these people, and now we're going to do testing? This should have been done way before this here coming before us, I feel, but that's okay.
Yeah, and a lot of the, for the SS three, and you're correct, it's, it would be, and that's something that maybe we can do different in the future, if they had that material stockpiled. You know, I called both Melvern and the quarry by Woodbine, and they had to start making the SS three, because they didn't have any stockpiled. Because the both of them, what they typically sell is the SS five material. And so that's what their plan is, is trying to stockpile during the winter months. You know, and so it's, even though we want to go get a test, they might not have that material available until we purchase some, and then they have to make it. But what this, what this does is even though we accept the unit price for a material, that doesn't mean we're going to buy any of it. You know, we might get a sample, and Darren and I might decide like, you know what, we don't want that stuff.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from any of the other commissioners? If not, I've got a couple of, Monty, go ahead, or did you have something, Monty?
No.
Okay, I, you've explained to me, Justin, why you're buying from, the need to buy from two different producers. But my question would be, how do you give them an estimate on how much you're going to use and to be able to get the best price? If indeed that you could say, well, we're not, we'll test this one, and we're not going to buy from them. How do you, how do you do that price? How do you guarantee it from the producer, how much you're going to use?
Well, number one, I've made it pretty clear to both of them, you know, that right now, we're at this point, you know, we're we're not guaranteeing purchasing anything right now, especially for the SS three, because it's going to be a lot smaller quantity than the SS five. You know, really, it kind of depends on up to Darren and what his schedule is for this year, you know, or is he rebuilding any roads, you know, in those unincorporated towns and subdivisions where he might be using more SS three? You know, I think as soon as, if we get a an acceptance for the SS three material, as well as all the aggregates, you know, we can, you know, start trying to fit our quantities, you know, into that budget and kind of give them an idea. I mean, I think we need to see the material from the SS three also, because we haven't purchased that material in the recent past. You know, we need to see that material firsthand, you know, crushed and really what it looks like. Also, that's going to be another consideration. And then, I mean, eventually, we need to start, we need to give them a quantity, because they need to have that material, material produced.
Well, again, I mean, I think it's pretty difficult. I would assume if I were Ham or Knight on how I was going to quote this, if I didn't have any type of justification or guarantee that you're going to buy one ton or a million tons, I would, you know, and for us to just put it out there like that, I think is kind of a mistake. I would like to see them have some sort of a an assurance from the county that we're going to buy so much, because I think the price would potentially go down. So that's my opinion on that. My next question is regarding the rock last year that we were having so much trouble with that ruined a lot of tires, including one of mine. Are we buying that same rock again this year from the same producer? Or where are we at? Which one was that, by the way? Was that the AB three?
I'm assuming that would have been the SS five.
SS five, okay. And we're buying that again from the same producer?
Correct, correct. We, you know, and so, and that's coming out of Ham. You know, if we, so, so so, okay, so with the rock, so if in order to build, you know, what Darren's trying to do is build that hardpan, build that base into our gravel roads. And I think he's made a lot of good strides in doing that. And so the material that we purchased for the SS five, you know, comes in a certain size with a certain hardness. Okay, so we can purchase material from a quarry that's from, that uses a softer material. And so therefore, the edges won't be so jagged. And so, you know, the harder rock, when you crush that, has just more jagged, jagged edges. We can purchase softer material, which will have not as jagged edges. However, it'll break down more, and it'll be a duster material. But it's, I still think that Darren is, his intent is to still try to build the the structural integrity of our gravel roads and keep improving that. Is that, is that correct, Darren?
You know, I can answer that question there. The smaller material, one, doesn't, doesn't really lend itself to accepting the loading of the rural traffic, which is semi-truck traffic. If you buy a larger aggregate, you get a better base. And if you go to the three-quarter aggregate, by the way, which is harder and sharper, it takes more of it. So if you're looking at purchasing the SS three to do what you can do with the SS five, you're looking at approximately five thousand ton less with the dollars that we have, and that equates to, you know, if you pick at fifteen loads a mile, you're getting, you're actually getting about five thousand ton less, which is about three hundred loads to about twenty-one miles. So with what you're purchasing with the SS five, you can re-gravel. Now, when I say re-gravel, I don't mean rebuild, rebuild's a different thing. But if you were just say, we're going to go re-gravel a mile, that's twenty-one less miles a year you'll be able to do. So in value, we're looking at the SS five material.
All right, well, thank you for the education. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
All right, that having been said, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid for aggregate and aggregate hauling as listed in RFA 107-21.
Second the motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 107-21 bid award for aggregate and aggregate hauling. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll ask for a vote. Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks? Commissioner Sparks?
Nay.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson is aye. That vote does pass four to one. Thank you very much. We'll move to item number four. RFA 108-21 for 2021 motor graders with Darren Fishel, Roden Bridge Administrator. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, commissioners. This is for the Award of Contract for the Purchase of Three New Motor Graders. Sealed bids were opened on December 29, 2020 at the City-County Building. Three bids were received and are as follows. Foley Equipment bid a Caterpillar Model 150, total purchase price of eight hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, with a trade-in guarantee of three hundred and ninety thousand. So a total cost price of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Murphy Tractor bid a John Deere Model 770 GP, a total price of one million, twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, with a trade-in guarantee of three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, leaving a total cost of six hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Central Power Systems bid a Sanne Model SMG 200C-8 for a total price of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-eight cents, with a trade-in guarantee of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. That leaves a total cost amount of four hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. The bid documents were checked. The Sanne motor grader did not meet the bid specification and is therefore disqualified from consideration. Let me define a few terms. Guaranteed trade means that if in five years or seventy-five hundred hours, the particular dealer is awarded the bid, this is the trade value they will allow for each machine. These, by the way, these are all pre-guaranteed trade. We used to do the guaranteed repurchase, which meant at the end of five years or seventy-five hundred, this is the amount the particular dealer would repurchase the machine for. In both of these examples, Salyne County owns the machine and retains the right to dispose of them as they see appropriate. Salyne County has been using the total cost bid method for purchasing motor graders since 1990. Total cost bid lets the county consider all major costs before actually buying machine. In addition, this method allows the county to acquire guarantees on maximum equipment costs through the competitive bidding. In writing, we have the purchase price, the maximum we will pay for repairs and scheduled maintenance. The three motor graders scheduled for repurchase are 2016 John Deere 770 GPs. All three machines will be sold back to Murphy Tractor for the amount of four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars. The alternatives for action would be to approve the total cost bid in the amount of eight hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, and award to Foley Equipment Salina, Kansas for three new 2021 Caterpillar 150 Electronic Over-Hydraulic Motor Graders with a guaranteed trade of three hundred and ninety thousand in 2026. Or approve the total cost bid in the amount of one million, twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars to Murphy Tractor Great Bend, Kansas for three new 2021 John Deere 770 GP Electric Over-Hydraulic Motor Graders with the guaranteed trade of three hundred and seventy-five thousand in 2026. See, we could reject all bids and direct staff to an alternative direction. Staff recommends approving the total cost bid in the amount of eight hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, and award to Foley Equipment Salina, Kansas for the three new 2021 Caterpillar 150 Electric Over-Hydraulic Motor Graders with a guaranteed trade of three hundred and ninety thousand in 2026. The budget impact, if you should you award to Foley's, three hundred and seventy, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars will come out of our line item for equipment purchases. Four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars will come out of our Roden Bridge Special Machinery Account, equalling the purchase price of eight hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. The reimbursement of the 2016 John Deere motor graders for four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars will be deposited back into the Roden Bridge Special Machinery Fund upon receipt. Budgeted amount for these purchases is three hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That is more, less than what we have budgeted, so we plan on adjusting vehicle purchase to make up the difference. Instead of a crew six-pack, we will be purchasing an assistant superintendent truck.
All right, we'll open it up to commissioners for questions or comments.
Commissioner Weiss with a question, Darren. If I'm seeing this right, the four hundred and eighty-eight, two sixty-two, that's a guaranteed buyback from Murphy Tractor, is that correct?
Yes, this is the last of the guaranteed buyback machines. Moving forward, they will all be trade.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Well, once again, Darren, I'm, this is four years in a row now, I'm going to put up a resistance to this type of purchasing. I don't like it. There's a whole bunch of things here I don't like about it. I mean, I don't like the fact that we have to, that we're saying we need to trade them off every five years, seventy-five hundred hours. We try to stay under the seventy-five hundred hours. That makes our road graders actually running less than thirty hours a week on an average. That troubles me. I've got it circled here that there's a guaranteed repurchase on one of our worksheets, trade guarantee. I mean, we just listened to a presentation to lease vehicles last year, and they, and the presenter would not even give us a guarantee for one year. And here, these guys are giving it to us for five years. I can tell you, they don't know what that market's going to be in five years. Yeah, they're taking a crack at it, but I don't think it's our best price. I don't think we're getting the best price we can possibly get on that trade guarantee. So that's pretty much what I've got to say about it. And like I said, I'm, four years in a row, I've put up these questions, and it just doesn't seem to go anywhere, so.
We do, we do give them the opportunity, when we send out the bids, to purchase the machines. The next, the next round of motor graders will be for disposal. So at that point, people or anybody, any dealer can offer, and they have always been able to, offer, they will have to make an offer of a price for our used machines. So that will allow them to know what the market is then, and be able to beat that if they so choose.
And that actually doesn't come to fruition until next year, when we're out of the guaranteed buybacks.
They will be the year after that. Next year, we do not have any motor graders for repurchase. Or trade.
Are there any other questions from commissioners or comments? Do we have anybody on the line that wishes to speak from the public?
Mr. Chairman, nobody has their hand raised at this time.
All right, this time, I would bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the total cost bid and award Foley Equipment for three new Caterpillarers as presented by staff.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 108-21, 2021 motor graders of the bid award going to Foley Equipment. And I will call for a roll call vote here with Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss? Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is nay. That vote does pass four to one. And thanks for everyone, thank you, Darren. We'll move to item number five. RFA 109-21, Resolution 21-2325, Base Lease with Salyne County Public Building Commission with Hannah Stanball, Deputy County Administrator. Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, commissioners. This particular request for action gets us further down the road in regards to the Emergency Radio Communications Project. If you remember back in late September of 2020, the Salyne County Commission established a public building commission. On the fifteenth of December, you requested that the Salyne County Public Building Commission proceed with selling bonds for the Emergency Radio Communication System in an amount not to exceed six point five million. The Salyne County Public Building Commission did proceed and offered for sale the bonds. That transaction and activity took place yesterday. The sale results in the bonds being sold under the satisfaction, the parameters that were set forth, which were not to exceed six point five million and not to exceed two point two five percent. Not to exceed six point five million and not to exceed two point two five percent. Since that activity just took place yesterday, that information was not fully in your request that you have in front of you today, but I'm happy to report. It did not exceed the six point five million. And please report a true final interest cost of one point four zero seven percent. So well below the established parameters that we had back then. This county or the, the action in front of you today is now entering into a lease with the Public Building Commission. And what that means is that the county will lease certain real property to the Public Building Commission. The lease then provides for the acquisition, construction and equipment of the facilities for the Emergency Radio Communications Project. That will be placed on that land. And then the Public Building Commission leases all of the equipment and the land back to the county. The county then provides lease payments to the Public Building Commission to be paid for, to be used for the repayment of the bonds. So this resolution and action in front of you today approves the base lease with the Saline County Public Building Commission. The lease, the continuing disclosure undertaking, the tax compliance agreement, the county's closing certificate. And the bond purchase agreement. So that's what made your guys' packet this week pretty, pretty thick with all of those documents. Your alternatives for action are to adopt the resolution that authorizes Saline County to enter into a base lease with the Saline County Public Building Commission. And authorize the chairman's signature on all of the associated documents or do not adopt the resolution. Our staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution and enter into the lease with the Public Building Commission. This lease is projected to last for fifteen years for the total repayment of the bonds. The budget impact, the sale of the, of the bonds. As I mentioned earlier, satisfied the parameters that were set forth and thus. We have also already begun budgeting for the potential lease purchase. To the Public Building Commission for repayment of the bonds through plans previous identified in our capital improvement plan. Subject to any questions, that is all I have for you for this particular request for action.
Okay, it's not mentioned in this report and I'll, I'll call on our administrator, Phil Smith Haynes. For potential comment. I, I saw last week on the county's rating, as far as there are a credit rating, as far as our ability to borrow money. Would you like to comment on that briefly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will say that we did seek a bond rating on these bonds. For the Public Building Commission, but since the Public Building Commission has no independent source of revenue. The rating agency effectively rated the Saline County credit. And we will also be requesting a rating on the jail bonds when those are sold later this year. But they've sort of telegraphed to us where they intend to go with that rating because. They had to evaluate that as, as part of evaluating this particular offering. And we were very pleased to note that we got a double A two. Rating from Moody's Investor Services, which is a very good. Rating. It's equivalent to what the state of Kansas has and, and what the city of Wichita, for example, has. So. Very strong financial position and they were very complimentary of. Decisions that your commission has made in the past to put effective financial governance in place, so.
All right, thank you. And, and I will just say real quickly, patting, a pat on the back to everyone involved that's been able to. Help Saline County achieve that type of credit rating. You know, starting with the administration, the staff, the department heads, commissioners, so forth. We're, we're in an excellent position on with the public to know that from a credit rating standpoint. And we are able to do some really important things here such as this, this. Proposal right here with our radio towers and so forth and our emergency equipment along with our jail that's coming up. It puts us in an excellent position to be able to, to fulfill our, our ambitions here. So at this time, I would open it up for any commissioners to speak regarding this. Wish to? If not, I would maybe, David Otterberry, I see that you're on the line. Is there anything that you wish to add to what we've got going here?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. No, I, I think Hannah and Phil did a really good job of, of summarizing things and. And I would echo what Phil and you said concerning the rating. This is the first time I believe that the county has ever received a rating. Because you haven't issued debt in a long time and to come in with a double A two rating. In light of, you know, you've got some pretty significant borrowing needs. To come in at that double A two level is, is a very, very nice accomplishment.
All right, thank you. And I too am very proud to be a, a part of it, proud of Phil and, and Hannah both. In, in their participation in all that we do and enable us to, to re, reach this type of credit rating. So at this point, I would ask if there's any members of the public who wish to speak to this.
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
All right, thank you, Brad. I will bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty-five as presented by staff.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one oh nine dash twenty-one. Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty-five. Base lease with the Saline County Public Building Commission. Are there any further comments? I will call for the vote. Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson is aye. That vote does pass five, zero. Thanks for everyone who had a part in this. We'll move to item number six. RFA one ten dash twenty-one, resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty-six. RFD Go Bond Base Lease with Saline County Public Build, Public Building Commission. And again with Hannah Stanball, our Deputy County Administrator. Good morning again, Hannah.
Good morning. And I apologize, I would be remiss not to note that we do have our financial advisor, Dave Artaberry. And then our bond counsel, Mitch Walter with Gilmore and Bell that are attending our meeting today. So if the commissioners do have any other questions in regards to these actions. And this request for action is a resolution for the sale of general obligation bonds and all the associated closing documents. For the purchase of the radio equipment for the rural fire districts, basically on behalf of the rural fire districts. And staff and our financial advisor did release a notice to sell general obligation bonds and we did receive a total of three offers. After the review of it, it was determined that Bennington State Bank offered the lowest true interest cost at zero point eight three nine percent. And the lowest net interest cost of just above sixteen thousand dollars and was selected as the purchaser of general obligation bonds. The attached resolution to this request for action authorizes and directs the issuance. And the sale and delivery of general obligation bonds in the amount of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. For the purpose of the rural fire districts being able to purchase their emergency radio communications equipment to be used on the new system. This request for action asks for the approval of the resolution and the approval of all of the different closing documents to complete this particular transaction. So your alternatives today are to adopt the resolution and direct, authorize and direct the issuance. Sale and delivery of the general obligation bonds and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents or not to adopt the resolution. The recommendation from staff is to adopt the resolution and authorize for the. Signature of all documents associated to complete the sale of general obligation bonds. Each one of the rural fire districts has been provided with the information on as to what their particular bond and interest payment. Would look like and are extremely supportive and thankful of the county commission. With offering this particular avenue for them as an option for their purchases that are necessary to operate on the new, new system. The budget impact and the bond and interest payments are going to be made by each of the respectful rural fire districts. Based on their particular allocation of the debt service over seven years. And thank you very much to our financial advisor, Dave Artaberry, for assisting with helping to create that different allocation and try to figure out what each district. Payment amount would be. The costs of issuance are also paid with the bond proceeds and that is also divided amongst the rural fire districts as well. Each of our districts has been anticipating a purchase of emergency communications equipment. And they have been budgeting certain funds over the last, I think, three years. So they do have a certain amount that they are utilizing to help kind of reduce. The amount that of the general obligation bonds. I believe when we came to you back on the fifteenth of December. The request was not to exceed five hundred thousand. And so after getting all of the information from the rural fire districts as to what they had for. To assist for a down payment got us to the actual general obligation bond amount of four hundred and fifteen thousand. Also included in your request for action is just a, an overall. Look at to what each fire district, what their allocation by debt is. And then just to kind of give you an idea as far as what the cost of issuance piece it looks like as well. But again, that is divided amongst each one of the rural fire districts. Certainly open for any questions that you might have in regards to this particular resolution and action.
All right, are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak to this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands raised at this time.
All right, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty-six and authorize the chair to sign all pertaining documents as presented by staff.
Second to motion.
It's been approved. Motion has been made and seconded to approve RFA one ten dash twenty-one, resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty-six. Rural Fire District Go Bond Base Lease with Saline County Public Building Commission. Are there any further comments? Well, as for the vote, Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson is aye. That motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Hannah. We'll move to item number seven. RFA one eleven dash twenty-one, allocation of alcohol funds for twenty twenty-one with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator. Good morning, Phil.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So Saline County, like all counties throughout the state, receives a distribution of funds derived from the gross receipts tax on alcohol. Per state law, this funding is divided by formula between the county's general fund and two special funds. A special alcohol fund and a special parks and recreation fund. It is Saline County's practice to accept applications from agencies seeking to use these funds every other year. For the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one funds, applications were received in October of twenty nineteen. Six agencies applied for special alcohol funds and four agencies applied for special parks and recreation funding. Two of the commissioners met with me last year and recommended an allocation of funds. The recommendations for twenty twenty were confirmed by your commission on January seventh of last year. And today I am bringing to you the twenty twenty-one recommended budget amounts based on. The percentage distribution that was recommended last year. Allocation of funding is subject to receipt of an annual report from each agency. Annual reports have been received from all but two of the agencies, one in each fund. Those requests were sent out in October and follow-up requests were sent in November and December. So at this time, staff recommends that the commission authorize payment of the twenty twenty-one budget amounts. To all of the agencies from which we have received those annual reports. Given the balance in the special alcohol fund, payments are probably not going to occur until the March distribution. But there is sufficient funding in the special parks and recreation funds to make those payments immediately. Your alternatives for action are to authorize payments to the agencies from which we have received the reports. To authorize payment to all agencies, to hold all payments until the annual reports have been received. Or to direct, direct staff to propose an alternative solution. Staff recommends authorizing the payments to the agencies that have submitted the reports. If the other agencies subsequently turn in their annual reports. Staff can return to your commission for authorization for additional dispersments. And I would be happy to answer questions.
Anyone from the commission have questions?
Commissioner Lee's here. I have one, one question, Administrator. There's two organizations that didn't come in their report. Are the funds just being held and given them the opportunity to, to get those reports in? Or are those funds being dispersed amongst the other four?
My recommendation would be to just hold the funds at this point and see whether they turn in those reports. When we take applications this fall, we would just basically have a higher amount of funding to disperse in twenty twenty-two.
Further questions? Any members of the public who wish to speak to this?
Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we authorize the payments to the agencies listed in RFA one eleven dash twenty-one as recommended by staff.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA one eleven dash twenty-one allocation of alcohol funds for twenty twenty-one. And any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is aye. That motion does pass five, zero. We'll move to item number eight. Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty-four Declaration of a State of Local Public Health Emergency of, for Saline County. With Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director. Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning, Commissioner. So I'm here to ask for another sixty-day extension to the current local disaster declaration. To ensure that the community and essential partners still have access to the resources and supplies that they need. During this disaster. Just some quick examples of things that we've been able to accomplish. Through this local disaster declaration is we've sheltered over a hundred and fifty people. That number fluctuates daily. Just due to the sheer demand in cases that we've had. And also we've been able to secure testing supplies and a machine for the Saline County Jail. To save on driving test samples to the lab in Topeka for the sheriff's office.
And again, Michelle, this just enables our ability to get the funding or get the materials from the state. Is that correct?
Correct.
Saying that correctly? All right. Are there any questions, comments from commissioners? Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this?
Mr. Commissioner, no one, Mr. Chairman, no one has their hand raised at this time.
All right, thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty-four as presented by staff.
Second to motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve a resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty-four Declaration of a State of Local Public Health Emergency for Saline County. Further comments? Call for the vote. Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Weiss.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson is aye. That motion does pass five, zero. Thank you, Michelle. We'll move into informational items now, again with the emergency management update with Michelle Barkley. Emergency Management Director. And good morning again, Michelle.
Good morning. Brad has a PowerPoint that he will share. Good morning. Brad has a PowerPoint that he will share. Okay, thank you. So this is a recap of the fourth quarter. If you could move to the next slide. So we are on actually day 306 of COVID. I got a little carried away with my pre-counting when I did the PowerPoint, so I apologize. Some things that haven't changed throughout the entire disaster is we are still sheltering, we are still providing PPE and resources to essential partners. We are still following and tracking any changes to public assistance. That has been a revolving door with guidance evolving and changing and being written. We've also participated in several planning meetings in the past couple weeks and couple months just to ensure that everyone is on the same pages with vaccine changes and testing opportunities. We've closed up all of our CRF, EOC grant opportunities. And we've continued to request testing supplies. Like I mentioned earlier, we were even able to secure a machine so that the sheriff's office could do testing in-house for the jail. Next slide. So things that we've accomplished really hasn't changed much. Sheltering is still being available at the Best Western and at Webster Conference Center. Resource requests are still hanging between testing supplies, testing machines, contact investigators and PPE. Like I mentioned earlier, all of the CRF, CRF projects have been closed out for PPE and the EOC grant that we received from the state. And public assistance so far hasn't changed. It's still only going to be the category B expenses and it'll be that 75 and 10% reimbursement both from the federal level and from the state. And planning meetings really haven't changed much with partners still continuing to work with the health department in whatever that they need. Helping them with their vaccine planning and getting that set up. Next slide. So just a little breakdown of the resource requests. We've done over 2,640 test kits. That is a little on the light side because we did add CRL and Well Health. We did get some agencies that wanted to partner with them directly. So we, in emergency management, kind of served as the middleman with the paperwork side of that. So those agencies could get test supplies so they could test their agencies. We've received 187 cases of PPE and a total of 2,827 supply requests, including masks, gowns, gloves. This does not include the 15 pallets of hand sanitizer that the health department received from KDHE. I still have seven pallets, so if anybody needs hand sanitizer, I am always willing to give a case. Next slide. Like I mentioned earlier, the numbers for sheltering are very hourly. At Webster Conference Center, we have done 38 people for sheltering. And at the Best Western Motel, we have done 114 for a total of 153 people. This is something that is greatly appreciated by the community. I can say that we have done a handful of first responders, of healthcare providers, teachers. We've even helped some homeless individuals during those colder nights. The state was willing to put them up for a night or two, so I think that this is one of the greatest resources that we have that we got through the local disaster declaration that the state was able to provide. Next slide. So just a couple updates on some of the grants that we have been doing throughout the pandemic. So the hazardous material emergency preparedness grant, both of those have been approved and are being worked on now for the conference for the regional hazmat team and for the chlorine leak simulator. And the EMPG has been approved for the same amount as last year. Whenever I get the approval letter, I will be before you again to accept those funds. For the PPE project, we have finalized and closed out all of that and distributed that to all county departments. And the EOC enhancement grant has been closed out. And actually, several of those laptops have been distributed to the health department to help with new contact tracers. Next slide. So just to recap, I had, the weather was kind of, I want to say docile during 2020. I'm a little hesitant for what 2021 is going to look like. We did not have any recorded tornadoes in Celine County. Here on this screen, it just kind of shows the precipitation counts where we're at compared to Wichita and Russell and where we normally are at precipitation-wise from normal Decembers and where we actually ended up. Next slide. So a rural fire recap. Compared to 2019, the number of med calls were significantly larger than they were in past years. We are thinking that that might have to do with an increase in COVID calls in the county. We are working to get you a report for that and a breakdown for each rural fire district to see how many med calls that they did have that were COVID-related. And so hopefully in the next report out, I will have that. So a total of call for services in the fourth quarter were 196. Fire calls were 85 and med calls were 111. Next slide. So overall, for 2020, there was a total of 603 calls for service for the rural fire districts. There were 275 fire calls and 328 med calls. Just a side note, this month, we are finalizing the zone and channel assignments for the rural fire districts for the new radio rollout, so they are very excited about that and it is going pretty well. Next slide. And that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
All right, are there any questions from commissioners for Michelle? Thank you very much, Michelle. Well detailed and appreciate you and your staff over there to taking care of business as above and beyond the call of duty and in this very difficult time. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move to item number two, commissioners' comments. Does anyone have anything? Item number three, announcements of any sort. We will move to our annual reorganization of the county commission. And item number one is the election of officers. At this time, I would open the floor to, for nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chair, I've got a couple of comments to make and I'd be happy to make a nomination if that's okay.
Okay.
First of all, congratulations you and Commissioner Spark for four more years. Looking forward to serving at least two more years with you guys. And congratulations to all the other elected officials. And having said that, I would like to nominate Commissioner Sparks as chair.
Okay.
Commissioner Vice Wees is vice chair.
Let's hold up there, Mike. I think we need to do these one at a time.
Okay.
And so Commissioner Sparks has been nominated for chairman. Is there a second?
There's a second and I move that nomination cease.
All right, it has been moved and seconded that Roger Sparks be the chairman for the year 2021. It has also been made and I would second that, that the motions, the nomination cease. So at this time, I will ask for a roll vote. Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Commissioner White.
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidriksen is aye. That motion carries five zero. And we will move to the vice chairman. And I would open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Jim Wees for vice chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved. Are there any other nominations? If not, I would call for a vote. It's been moved and seconded that we nominate Jim Wees as the vice chairman. And Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
And Commissioner White.
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidriksen is aye. So that is five zero. Jim Wees will be the vice chair for the year 2021. Now we move to our secretary. I believe it's secretary, Bill. So I would open the floor for nominations for secretary.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate yourself, Commissioner Bob Vidriksen for secretary.
Well, I'm going to decline that simply because I've been an officer for three years. I think we need to move back to, and I would nominate Commissioner White as you haven't served in a capacity of, of an officer. And I would nominate Mike White for, I mean, guess we can go back. Mike White has nominated me, but I'm choosing to decline that at this time. And I have nominated Mike White. I hope we're doing this procedurally correct. Is there a second to, for nomination for Mike White?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we moved Mike White into the position of secretary. And all those in favor, start with Monty Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Wees.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. White.
Nay.
It's, Commissioner Vidriksen is aye and that motion passes four to one. So at this time, I will turn the floor over to Roger Sparks for the remainder of the meeting. As the new chairman.
Okay, well, thank you. And Mr. Chair Vidriksen, thank you for your years of support and, and your, your continued superb quality of running meetings. And I hope that, I know it'll take me quite a while to get into where we're at. And thank you, everyone, for your vote and support for me for chair. Right now, we have recessed to a breakout room and so I move we recess under executive session.
For Mr. Chair, this would be for an executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for the purpose of discussing appointment of a department head. And I believe we would like 15 minutes for that executive session.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make that, that motion. So I move recess into executive session under the non-elected personnel exemption to the Kansas Open Meeting Act for 15 minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:35.
Commissioner Wees, I second that motion.
Okay, it's been, we had a motion and a second. And do I take an election call? So it's like, do we need Mr., I don't have that in front of me, so it's like.
Yeah, if you could just.
Yes, call for a vote. We have a, a motion and a second, so. Mr. Vidriksen?
Aye.
Mr. Shadwick?
Aye.
Mr. Wees?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks, aye. So we will recess in, for non-elected personnel for 15 minutes and come back into meeting at 10:35.